Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Ginn.
Here.
And Height.
Present.
Equorum is present.
Thank you very much. Councilmember White is gonna be doing the prayer with some friends and so I'll turn the mic over to you and then we'll stand and do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, I'd like to introduce some special friends that are going to help us out tonight. First of all, Guy Lyons, who serves the community in Levy through Lyons Share is going to pray for us. And then, the pledge will be led by Josh Foster, who's a 5th grader at Lakewood Elementary, and Eli Foster, who's a 3rd grader at Lakewood Elementary. Thank you.
Well, good. I invite everybody to rise for the prayer and pledge.
God, we come to you in the name of Jesus Christ. And we are grateful for the life that you've given us here in the United States, grateful for the life you've given us here in Arkansas, and grateful for the city of North Little Rock, grateful for these people who serve the community, who work hard and deal with a lot of details and things that most people don't know about that has to be dealt with. I just want to pray for them, that as they go about this business that they have to do, it's easy to get lost in all the details. Some things may be frustrating, some things may be more enjoyable, but ultimately, you're a God that makes the good laws, and you sent Jesus to redeem us, and in the meantime, that we're still in this fallen world, laws are necessary. So I just pray for these people as they have to go through this process of dealing with laws, implementing laws, and interacting with the people, that they will just be able to not get lost in the details and the things that would easily distract them, and that they would be the people who stand between chaos and lack of rule, and serve well, serve the people well, and remember that the laws are here for the sake of the people and for themselves, and just very grateful for them, grateful for the opportunity to come here and intercede to you on your throne, on their behalf, on the behalf of all the business that's gonna go on here tonight, and for some people, the things that they're coming to deal with are really big things, and for other people, it seems like it's not, but you know the smallest to the greatest of our needs. And you care, and so I just pray for them, that they would handle these things with a care, knowing that you care, Jesus. I say, thank you for them, thank you for tonight and this opportunity again, Jesus, and we pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
Y'all ready?
Yes.
Okay, go.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One motion. Thank you, guys, so very much. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. Thank you very much. Communications, I'm showing four, anybody wanna pull one of those? I'm gonna pull four. About a motion for 1, 2, and 3. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Communication number 4, would you like it by title or in its entirety? This is an email from Kim Smith. Mayor Smith, I wanted to let you know our experience last night with a North Rock electric crew that was working in our neighborhood. We live on Calico Creek Drive in Overburke, and our entire neighborhood was without power yesterday and last night. There were four very large North Rock electric trucks and countless workmen in our neighborhood working tirelessly to restore our power. Of course, every car that passed by and every neighbor outside was asking numerous questions, as was I. They were all very gracious, polite, and forthcoming with information on the status of the problem and the anticipated repairs. After our lights flickered on and it was apparent our power had been fully restored, my husband and I discussed it and decided to buy dinner for those who were very hot and tired, working hard, so that the rest of us wouldn't have to be uncomfortable. I took $100 over to the crew and offered to buy their dinner. They all thanked me but refused to take the money. I even said I would never tell anyone I gave it to them. And, "No ma'am, we can't accept that, but thank you," was the response. Finally, a gentleman that I assumed to be the crew leader came over. I offered the money to him and asked him to feed the crew on us again. He refused to take the money. They did finally accept some cold water. The crew leader said, "The best thing you can do for us is let the mayor know we did a good job, so admirable." I believe they told me they were Chris Nichols and Shane, and I think they said Crew 66. These men deserve to be recognized for, not only their refusal to take the money from a North Rock electric customer, but their professionalism and hard work. Thank you for employing such men.
You know, I mean, it says it all. Just in my recollection, I think, Scott, we've had four major storms this month. We had one Buffett Night Concert, we had one the next week, we had one last Wednesday, and we had another one yesterday, and all of our employees have worked unbelievably hard, and especially the ones of our linemen and all people of the electric company, so thank you for what you do, and we appreciate it. Yeah?
I was talking to a springer today at lunch, he said the damage done this time was worse than the damage done in the ice storm back in 2000. It was amazing.
You know, we lost, what, nine poles, Scott? Fifteen, and that's a major construction job, putting up fifte-- taking down and putting back up fifteen, and we did it all in three days, so top-notch job, Scott. Thank you to you and all your people.
I know that, you know, as a customer service organization, I don't care what you're doing out there, you know, you realize that you can't please 100% of people 100% of the time, but you know what you can have? You can have that desire to do that, and I think that's what was evidenced, you know, last week by our electric department, so kudos to them.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
No, this is a great, great point to point out, that when we have massive power outages like that, we always take into consideration the most on first, most on first. So if I can go spend one construction crew, three hours, and get up 3,000 people, probably can take one construction crew for three hours and get up 20 people, I'm going for the 3,000 first, and that's been our policy, and it will always be our policy. Doesn't matter where it is, what part of the city it's in, most up first, and it works well for us, and there's no politics, no geographic decisions to be made, most up first. So, I've got some bad news to share tonight, it hasn't hit the paper yet, but our longtime friend and probably our longest acting commissioner, Carl Jackson, passed away yesterday. He had been on the, he was originally appointed to the Board of Adjustments in 1972. So, I was a junior in college when Carl went on that board. He was a great guy and a great friend, and we're certainly gonna miss him. Okay, let's see what we got, let's do... Okay, we got public comments on the sign-in sheet for legislation. I'm just gonna go down the list. Three minutes, everybody on the public comments, please hold your talk to three minutes, and first one is Dave Davenport on 01982, 01982. Dave?
This is Michael Wood.
Yes, sir. Raise it up.
Got it.
There you go.
Anyway, this is in regards to the auto repair business in an R3 zone located at 1705 Moss. That's a block and a half from my house, and I don't want a junk car dealer there in my area. This, these people were located at the end of Parker going into Pike Plaza, and if you took that street into Pike Plaza, all the junk cars and all the trash and everything that's in that area was terrible, and I don't think it's suitable for an R3 zone, and I wanna oppose it, and I don't know, Mr. Taylor approved it and put it up for the planning commission, and they approved it. I just found out about it two days ago, and Norman Clifton explained to me that I have to be within 200 feet before I get a letter of wanting to say something about it, but it doesn't belong in that neighborhood. We're trying to improve Bayonne Cross area and putting all these cars in that area, and they have one garage and then get one car in it, and right now, I've got pictures here if anybody wanted to see them, but there's 20-something cars sitting in that lot right now. Now, I don't know how many of them are salvage cars or what they are, but I oppose this being in our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like Dave Whitson.
I'm speaking on the auto repair in the R3 zone also. The R3 zone is there to protect the homeowner and the family from public nuisances. A junkyard defined is a public nuisance and is illegal inside the city limits. I've seen Pike Plaza and all the inoperable cars on that parking lot, and I agree, this is not something that North Little Rock is going in a direction of, you know, we've got Dollar General right there, and that is a very user-friendly business. It enhances the community, and something like this is, you know, not good for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Kevin Brown. Kevin, if it matters, that legislation is gonna be pulled tonight, it's gonna be withdrawn, so you're welcome to speak, but we're just being taken off the agenda. So you still wanna speak, or you okay? You okay? Okay. Tammy Muse, 01981. I don't know if that's right, it's not 01981, which one is it?
It is.
It is?
01981.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, this is all new to me, so I really don't know what I'm here for, trying to get the special use tax to allow us to do the consignment in this location.
Okay, are you the applicant?
Yes, me and my husband.
Okay, why don't you sit down, and when we get to that, if we wanna ask you questions, we can.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, Todd Adams, 01979.
Yes, sir, Mayor, I'm the applicant for that project.
Okay, just do the same thing, then.
Okay.
Okay. Erin Hitten, on 1705 Moss, 01982.
How you doing? Well, what we're doing, at 1705 Moss, I am the applicant, so what we're doing there is definitely trying to get it rezoned for the auto repair shop. What the residents fail to realize, that it is a warehouse-style building. It's a one-way in, but the inside is not for one car. Actually, on the inside, we have possibly about eight cars we can put inside. The cars outside are the cars that, in the process in the beginning, was that us relocating, like I said before in the last session, was that, once I, we was notified that the building itself was zoned for commercial use. A friend of mine had, was relocating his business, so I decided to come down and, excuse, come down to find out if our, if the building was zonable, and I found it wasn't, so that was started the process. We are not there to clutter up the neighborhood, we're actually there to enhance it for some people, if they, if the resident hasn't realized that. We have re, went ahead and did the fence, went in the process of cleaning the whole parking lot out, we started painting it, excuse me, had my sons out, excuse me, had my sons out with me, my younger sons, they was out helping me doing the father, father-son thing. Also with the neighborhood, we got a couple kids that comes around, just like on Pike when we was down there, we had the neighborhood come around, anything they needed, we're there to help. We're not there to destroy anything. So, we had a few kids the other day that came through, they was going out, cutting a few yards, they needed something fixed on their lawn mower. I was there, cleaning up, he said, "Mr., can you fix this?" He said, "I got a hole in the tank." I helped him out, showed him how to do it so that he would learn. We're not there to destroy anything. Anything possible, we help build it up, so that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, sir. Margot Warner.
Yes. I just wanted to ask you what he stated, they also mentioned that it was a junkyard, and no point is it being used as a junkyard. There are cars parked there, and then the reference that they made to Pike Plaza seems to account everything that's, every car that's stored or sitting at Pike Plaza was Mr. Harris'. It was not. I went through Pike Plaza today, there are still cars sitting over there. All of the problems vehicles on that lot did not belong to this lot.
Thank you. Okay, Bruce, is it Tate? On 19...
Should be 35, 14 and 35, 16 Sycamore.
Well, let's see which one that is first, is it on a condemnation, or is it on a...
It was a grass.
Grass lanes?
Right.
Is anybody finding it? Sycamore, did you say?
Yes, sir.
It's part of the listing of our 19120.
Let's, okay, okay, thank you.
Mayor, probably since we're gonna have a public hearing on that, that the appropriate time, if it's your property, would be to have any comment on that during the public hearing?
Okay. All right, sir, if you'll sit down, we're gonna have a public hearing on that, then you can come up right there during the public hearing, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that takes care of those. Let's go into new business.
Our 19110, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying local government endorsement of Garber LLC to participate in the tax-backed program as authorized by Section 15-4-2706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
About a motion. Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Our 19111, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution renewing and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Witt O'Brien's LLC for disaster debris monitoring services.
About a motion.
Summit.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
The, let me interject here real quickly. We had an after-action meeting this morning, we will have another one probably in 30 days to kinda analyze how we handle these emergencies this month, and it looks like we are not going to need this debris service, but we're following FEMA's regulations, so they are there in the event that we have another event. We've gone through the rules that FEMA requires. We're gonna put the good side and the bad side of everything that happened, I really think that our training that we've been going through the last seven years has really paid off in how we handle these issues, so I'm really proud of that training that we've been concentrating on for so long. But we will have a report, and once we put that report together, I'll share it with all the council members to show you what our opinion was on what we thought we did good and what we did wrong, and so we'll get that out, hopefully, I don't know, 30, 45 days maybe. Okay, go ahead.
Our 19112, Mayor Smith.
I'll tell you what, let's do right here, let me call a public hearing on several of these, I'm gonna call a public hearing on these cleanup lanes. So, anyone here that wants to speak on 2204 East Washington, 2204 and a half East Washington? That's it. You're welcome to come up and talk. Anybody here to speak on either one of those properties? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, now let's call 112.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Placy County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 2204 East Washington Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption. Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Our 19113, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Placy County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 2204 and a half East Washington Avenue, Apartments A, B, C, D, and E in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
In a second, we got it both, thank you. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna call another public hearing, these are on condemnations, and I'll read the addresses off, 5900 MacArthur Drive, 204 West 13th Street, 4900 Alpha Street, 421 West 24th, and that would be it, okay? Anybody here to speak on any of those addresses? Yes, sir, come forward, please. You'll tell us your name and the address you wanna talk about.
My name is Byron Reeves, and the property is 5900 MacArthur. I had previously put a packet at each of the council members and the mayor's with the pictures in there, I was recommended to give a, take a picture of the floor damage and the actual repairs were made, and the picture in the, those pictures are in your packet. I told Chief Bradley that I wasn't going to rent the house anymore but plan to sell it. He said that would be okay, but I would have to keep the grass mowed and maintain the house so it wouldn't be an eyesore to the neighborhood. I agreed. In March, I contacted a commercial Realtor about selling it. It has a commercial zoning rating of C3. In his second call to me, the Realtor, he said he had seen the property, gave me an estimate of its value, and when he returned from a trip, he would call me to sign the listing contract and put up his sign. He never called back. Before his anticipated call, Laura Petty, the third code officer assigned to this case, had put up her nuisance to the neighborhood sign. Her sign was the reason the Realtor never called back. And as far as the repairs, I've made all the repairs. One of the pictures in there, the after picture, shows that all the, the sign that she put said that I was to make frontal repairs to the building, which I've done, and the picture of the before, at the time I received that advice, I had already cut away most of the rotten doors, and so I only had one small section that had some damage, so I took a picture of that, but the part that was remaining was the, not the worst part, and I'd cut away already the worst part, and I would like to have all code violations removed so I can try again to sell my property.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
I'm looking at this picture, and the top part at the bottom shows the really rough part, and the restored picture doesn't show it fixed, you can't see it. You know, he said there was a picture of the move, but it's on the right side, and it's not...
Both of them are pretty bad. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna close that public hearing, all right, let's fill them down the line.
Okay, our 19114, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 5900 MacArthur Drive in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
About a motion. We got a motion on 5900... About a second. Any discussion? On the motion.
Ross.
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
I thought that we were gonna be able to get the photos up, are we getting close to doing that, so that we can see that there's more than just these pictures involved?
Did you see the pictures?
Yeah, I saw this picture, yeah, but, you know, we have it in our packet, but just so that everyone can see what we're voting on, so, do we have any, are we...
We hope.
Okay, yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Our 19115, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 204 West 13th Street, otherwise known as 1209 Jim Wetherington, in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
About a motion.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Our 19116, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 4900 Alpha Street, rear structure, in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption. Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Our 19117, Mayor Smith.
Am I holding or withdrawing? I'm gonna withdraw that. Ms. White?
I'm sorry to interrupt these proceedings, but I'm a little confused, are we supposed to be leaving our mics on all the time or turning them on and off?
On and off.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna withdraw that, okay?
Our 19118, Mayor Smith.
Withdraw that also.
And Mayor, Councilmember Ross is asked why we withdraw this, and that was by way of explanation, and this property has been common in the state for quite some time, and the, there have been issues between the heirs and the administrator, and there's been an agreement among the heirs and the administrator and the attorneys for the estate. They have a buyer for the property, who owns other rental properties in the city, and so they're gonna sell it, and it just took a while for the parties to get together to be able to do that, and it's gonna be rehabilitated, and that's why it was at the request of actually myself and the code director that we asked this to be withdrawn. I talked to the estate attorney today, and he's gonna keep me updated on the progress because it has to be approved by the probate court, and estimates that the court will authorize the sale of the property within two to six weeks.
Is that West Eye?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Ross?
So, here's my question, so if we withdraw this, and then this all falls through, then we have to start the process all over again, correct?
Just with given notices, yes.
Okay.
Our 19119, Mayor Smith.
Call it.
Now, that one, Mayor, is another one.
Nineteen?
Uh-huh. Oh, eighteen.
Eighteen, we withdraw.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't keep up.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at four twenty-one West Twenty-fourth Street in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Somebody give me a motion.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height? R nineteen one twenty, Mayor Smith.
Okay, call it and then we'll give the gentleman time to come up and talk.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Placsey County tax collector against certain real properties in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Okay, Bruce, your turn now. Thank you for your patience.
I'm here to dispute the claim against the city of Little Rock code enforcement. Those two lots have got liens of $6,000 to cut in grass. That's fourteen times that that draft, that that notice is sent out on one of the addresses. Thirty-five fourteen was the one that, that's paperwork on it. Thirty-five sixteen has the same amount of charges with the land view, with the Arkansas Land Commission for $2,900. So the two lots was $7,000. That's what they told me a code, that the total liens against them was $7,000. Ms. Petty and Mr. Reeves, Wyatt Reeves, are very prejudiced people. You know, all these liens was, was put on record after I purchased this property. I didn't purchase property until 2015. It was in someone else's name in fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. I, when I purchased, there was no lien at all against this property. I went to pay the taxes and they told me it was $2,900 apiece. The, in the meantime, the lot had been sold by the land commission. So I've got my wife's name is on the, on the lien, and her name is nowhere on the deed. You know, they just, they do what they want to do. You know, I purchased property in North Little Rock in nineteen ninety-nine, and it was a problem then. I've had your code officer to tell me that he didn't want me on this side of the river. Get in my truck and go back. I asked him what would it take to, for me to get a, for him to leave me alone. He said my truck. I offered to give him in 2008. He said he didn't want that. He wanted it in 2012. I've, I've had my buildings, address deleted, cases from two oh eight transferred to two oh ten. You know, I've been fined $40,000. I've been, you know, driver's license revoked, simply because of ladies that don't like men, and especially one that don't like black men. It's not fair. You know, I've had inspectors to sit there and watch me do a job and then go to the court and get it towed down. Wayne Wright, as, as far as you can go back. I mean, it's just that I have never got a, a fair chance here in North Little Rock. I've done decent work. In nineteen ninety-nine, when I purchased these properties, I said that I would put siding on them, bring all the utilities up, sensor heating air. I did all this. New roofs. I rehabbed these houses, but any time Ms. Petty get a chance, she's gonna come out and, and come up with a reason for me to, to go to court.
Okay, three minutes is up. I, I don't see a lien on here that's any more than $185.
That's not what the court is saying. I went to repossess it. It's three hundred, it's $6,000. To make restitution, they told me $6,000.
You know, all we're doing tonight is, is approving a $185 lien. I, I don't see your address on here, but I'm sure it is somewhere.
Well, why would my wife's name be on there? I mean, she's not nowhere on the property.
I don't, I don't know. We're, we're kinda off topic. You know, we're, we're approving this one piece of legislation tonight. If you've got other liens on your property, then you need to get with our legal department and probably have to hire a lawyer, is what I would guess.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask, Mr. Tate, was there a house on this that was condemned, that was torn down, that the city had to tear down a house on this property?
There wasn't a house when I bought it. There was nothing was on the lot.
But has the city, I mean, I, because if a house, if, you know, if a house is condemned and the city has to tear it down, then they will put a lien.
There was no house on the lot when I bought it, and there was no liens against the house.
Okay, something, something's going on.
Yeah, it is. I thank you, sir.
You bet. I would, I would suggest that you get with legal and with code and let them try to figure out what's going on. All right, did we read that?
We read it. We need a motion.
How about a motion?
So vote.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O nineteen seventy-seven, Mayor Smith.
I'm gonna hold that, please.
O nineteen seventy-eight, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six ninety-seven, the zoning ordinance by repealing Article nineteen boards, adopting Article nineteen boards, declaring emergency first reading.
How about suspend rules? Anybody?
Let's suspend all the rules.
Second.
A motion to suspend all ratings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
I'll get, I'll get Amy to explain this to you.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
You wanna tell us?
Um, yes. We have found over the last several months in looking at some of the specific details that were contained in Article nineteen that established and create the rules for the Board of Adjustment and the Sign Board, that some of the requirements within the existing sections were, number one, confusing, and number two, had the Board of Adjustment and Sign Board having to meet requirements like they were more like a judicial proceeding than an administrative board, which they're an administrative board, and the requirements were onerous on the planning staff as well as legal. And so mainly, all this does is simplify the proceedings where the people who file appeals that are heard by the Board of Adjustment or the Sign Board get their due process, but not with some of the burdensome requirements, because the people who are before those boards do have the right to appeal to court if they are not satisfied with the results that they get either before the Board of Adjustment or the Sign Board. The other change that was made, there was some confusion on, within the code about what, what exactly went to the Board of Adjustment and what went to the Sign Board, and to eliminate that confusion, we just cleared up the language some. Any questions?
How about a motion to adopt?
So vote.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O nineteen seventy-nine, Councilmember Height?
Chief?
Uh-oh.
That's your Kellogg Acres.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at nine oh one Kellogg Acres Road in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from C-three zoning classification to Plan Unit Development, HUD, zoning classification by amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven.
Bruce, suspend all ratings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all ratings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions?
Could we have Mr. Spencer just come and explain on the PUD, on this PUD, because I know there's been some questions?
Absolutely, we can.
If this property sells or whatever, if he could just kind of come and explain them.
So, a little background on it. If you remember about ten, twelve years ago, we had the North Belt coming through, right through this area, and, and the property owners at that time thought this would be a good place for a mall. So we rezoned a lot of property up in that area, the commercial, to allow for a mall to come in. Well, everybody argued about the North Belt. It got removed from the system, and now we're stuck with a large area of commercial out in the middle of the neighborhoods out there, out in the woods, basically, out there. So, staff has highly recommended to get rid of the commercial zoning out there, and one of the ways was to, to do a PUD. So this will be a PUD for a wedding event center to allow weddings out there. It will be zoned for that use only. So if this were to fall through, the next property owner would either have to build what's in these drawings or come back and rezone to something else or a different type of PUD.
Ms. White?
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's you, Sean, or not. Because this is what we call an event center, and I know we've had event centers where we require police officers to be present. Is this one of those places where it's not in the, the nine things here on the legislation? Is this something we need to consider or have added?
The planning commission felt that this, this more was a wedding center than a typical event center that had come before you in the past where someone could rent it for a retirement party or a birthday party or that type of thing where alcohol was probably going to be served. You can add that condition if you feel needed to. So there will be weddings, and there is a reception hall, so I'm pretty sure there'll be alcohol being served there. So if you're, if you feel that you needed to add that, that'd be something you could add right now if needed.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I add my?
Sure.
Nickelware on this. I, I had discussed this with one of our aldermen a couple of weeks ago. Since then, I've come to make a U-turn on my thoughts about having a, an off-duty police officer out there. These wedding receptions, you know, they're gonna be serving champagne or maybe wine or, or beer, but if we put in a requirement for an off-duty police officer, we're looking at an added expense to people that are gonna be holding weddings out there in the neighborhood of three to $400, and that's, I just don't think that's necessary. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm opposed to that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I, Lakewood Property Owners, just to rent their building, if you serve alcohol, and they do require licensed police officers, not just, you know?
Who does?
The Lakewood Property Owners Association. If you just want...
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. Just, just to rent their small little, you know, the clubhouse, they require that if alcohol is served, and it's, it's not three or $400, you know, because you would only need one officer, I would think.
Well, it's...
But I don't see...
It's gonna be, say, $60 an hour, a minimum of three hours, chief? So it's gonna be three, that's $200, is what it's gonna cost. If you're having a small wedding with some champagne, to spend another $200, I don't know. I, I don't recall us, Sean, do we do that? I mean, we done that in the past?
We've done ones on, like, they just have straight event center where they can, you can rent it for anything you wanted to. We, we've added a, if, if alcohol was served, if an officer was to be provided.
And, and I understand for weddings, unless the families get into it or something, you may need the officers or something, but, you know, this is, is this only weddings? Absolutely, nothing else will be held there?
The applicants here, you may want...
Okay, I guess, I said we need to...
Let's ask. Where's the applicant? Come up. Yes, sir.
They want to have a 21st birthday party out there, you know, and it could be, you could be having anything.
Hi, I'm Todd Adams. I would hate to restrict it to just weddings and say that that's all we're gonna do. I think that would really restrict us if there was a retirement ceremony or training. We intend to focus on some local hospitals who do training events. Currently, they're going out into West Little Rock, so we're, we have some connections there. We're trying to hold training, retirement parties, you know, things of that nature.
What would you do in the event that someone wanted, what's the, what's the capacity?
Three hundred is, is the number. I think by talking to the fire marshal, it could hold as many as five hundred, but our intent would be to stay around three hundred to...
What if you wanted to have a college fraternity party with a band or a DJ and three hundred people show up and...
Not our intent. I think with the wedding venues, they're, they're booked out a year in advance just with weddings, so our intent is to focus on that. We have no, no reason to do that. College kids don't have enough money to, to rent this place anyway.
So, Mayor? Yeah. So you'll screen your applicants before agreeing to allow an event out there?
Yes, sir, absolutely. I mean, and that's in our best interest to protect our asset. We'll have a sizable investment there, so we will certainly do a screening process for sure.
Do we have a motion?
We do. On the motion, Ross?
I've already, yeah, I made a motion. Yeah, we got a motion.
You did.
On the motion. Go ahead.
And I understand and I respect what you're saying, but I know that we've had other event centers that we have had problems with in the past, and then just as some protection, you know, I don't want it to be an after, after the fact that we do need security. So I'm just trying to think of some, what can we put into place in the event that this occurs? Do we just wait till it happens and then try to come back and put legislation on you that you're not expecting?
Can, or Amy, can we put in the PUD that if there are problems with alcohol consumption on that property, that we can reconsider?
That's not very binding language. I mean, because we can always reconsider any of our legislation, but what, what are problems? And, and so, so I don't know that that would really add a lot to the ordinance. You know, it, it may be that, just as a suggestion, if there are gonna be over, I don't know, a certain number of guests, over a hundred guests and you serve alcohol, that you require a police officer. I don't know. Those decisions are up to you all. But I do think putting language like that in there, it adds some language, but it's not really enforceable. What happens is, it's just the same as it is now. If there's a problem, it has to come back to city council to amend the requirements on the PUD.
Is there any chance that we could put a time on it that police would be required, like, from, and I'm looking at the police chief over here for maybe some suggestions. Is it more of an evening thing that we're concerned about, from, say, nine to midnight or eight to midnight, and things during the day don't necessarily?
You got a thought on that?
I would rather not have it. I mean, I think it puts us at an unfair advantage on other event centers like it. I don't know of the restriction that they would have that way when you compare it. The comparables that we have don't have that. Obviously, there's plenty of, of rules. If we're too noisy, you have a noise ordinance if there, you know, any type of public disturbance. There's plenty of laws that are gonna get us that having a police officer there is, is not really gonna change that. If we cause any problems in that area, it's gonna hurt our business, and there's plenty of other laws that are gonna get us in trouble or get them in trouble, not us. So I think it's an extra layer, an extra expense, an extra coordination that would only make us less competitive.
And just, you know, I know in the past that we have put these restrictions on past event centers that we have had, you know, that we've approved, and I know that this is a wedding venue, so I, just your thoughts on this? Put you on the spot here.
Yeah, you did.
You're welcome.
You know, currently, there's an issue with an event center that I'm about to have in a couple of weeks, but it, it's set up a lot different than what this sounds like to me. I mean, if it's a wedding venue, we don't need to be there. I, I just don't see it. If we start getting complaints on it, then I'm gonna come to him, and we're all gonna sit down, we're gonna get with the city attorney and try to work something out and, you know, look at closing it as a nuisance or something like that. That, that would be my take on it. Now, he may go out tomorrow and start renting to large bands or whatever, and I don't, there's nothing we can do about at that point.
I just, I say let's give them a chance. They act like they got a reputable operation going, wanting to go here, and let's give them a chance. If we, like Captain Davis
If we, like Captain Davis said, if we start getting some problems out there, then we'll have to rough him up a little bit.
Sure, we can do that. Fair enough. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes, but I do wanna say something that, you know, this is, you know, I've nothing against them. I wish you well. Wedding venues are huge right now, but I just, I don't wanna have to be using a lot of the city's resources.
Yes, ma'am. Very, very reasonable.
Self-mind. How's that, okay?
Okay. That sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O-1980, Councilmembers Ross and White?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 4140 John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R1 zoning classification to C2 zoning classification by amending ordinance number 7697, first reading.
Move to spend all the readings. Second.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Oh, yes, sir. So, there was a bank there previously?
Correct.
Actually, the bank that I used.
Correct.
And it was an R1.
Correct.
True story, huh?
Yes.
Wasn't just one of those that fell through the cracks, I guess? Is that, is that the deal? Yeah, that bank's been there for...
It's been there forever.
Since I was knee-high to a grasshopper.
That's right. Okay. We would have to go back years and years.
Right, okay.
We couldn't find any record of why, but it's been that way for 30 years, probably.
All right, cool.
Actually, you probably were taller than knee-high to a grasshopper 30 years ago, but...
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
The applicant's here, and we just wanna tell them, welcome to Ward 1. Looking forward to having them here.
Absolutely. Okay, next.
Okay. O-1981, Councilmember Baxter?
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use to allow indoor retail in an I2 zone for a certain real property located at 7420 Count Massey Road in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Move to spend all the readings?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?